Welcome. This is the Municipality of Anchorage zoning board of examiners and appeals meeting for October 10th, 2019. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Tonya Hickoff.
Here.
Del Smythe.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Monica Emmerton.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, September 12th, 2019. Could I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Emmerton, Anna Second. Mr. Smythe, are there any additions, deletions to the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Special order of business. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Lang.
Yes, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we did the most recent as-built for this property and we work regularly with the petitioner's representatives, so I would like to be recused from this matter.
Could I have... Oh, this is for case number 2019-0117. The Davenports, it's a variance case. Could I have a positive motion for participation from Mr. Lang? Ms. Archer.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Lang, I heard you say that you have a conflict of interest based on the fact that you did, you performed some of the work that is at issue.
It has to be a positive motion.
I know, I understand. But that's what I understood you to say, for the first matter that's before us. So I would move to direct Mr. Lang not to participate in...
No, it has to be a positive motion.
Positive... I'm sorry. I would move to direct Mr. Lang to participate in case number, the first case, matter number one.
Ms. Emmerton, do you have any, anything to add as the second?
I do not intend to support my second. I think he should probably recuse himself because of conflict of interest.
Okay. So, please vote. Mr. Lang, you are excused from the first case. All right. Next, are there any other disclosures while we're at it? Seeing none. We'll go on. The next item is the consent agenda, and there is nothing on the consent agenda. No appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda. Which brings us to the public hearings and the first case. Okay, so, Mr. Lang has left the premises. And the four public hearing cases are variance cases, and variance cases are controlled by Regulation 2112-520, and I'm to explain the procedure. So, "The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections of sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance. Board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the Board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. Board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes and individuals three minutes. Time is kept by the secretary. Display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the time, of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, the staff, and the applicant. At the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Chair shall close the public hearing and the matter rests with the Board. Action by the Board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted Board. The fully constituted Board shall include all members of the Board, including vacancies, not excused for conflict of interest. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Every final decision of the Board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court." Okay, so with that, we will go to the first case. Case number 2019-0117. Are the Davenports, are their representative here? They indicate yes. So, will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was sufficiency of notice. A total of 88 public hearing notices were mailed on July 26th, 2019. Public comments were received in favor of granting the variance. They can be found starting on page 46 of your packet. The Eagle River Valley Community Council didn't comment, but the Chuyak Eagle River Advisory Board adopted a resolution in support of, it appears to be in support of granting the variance. That's on page 33 of your packet.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from the Dimensional Standards, Standards in Chuyak Eagle River to allow a single-story residential structure to encroach 25 feet into a 25-foot front setback. The structural encroachment into the setback was caused by work without a land use permit by the previous owner. Page seven of your packet has an as-built of the property, the current as-built. Page 11 has photos of the home and the property. The subject parcel is a non-conforming lot of record because the R6 district requires a minimum lot area of one acre, and this lot only has a little over half an acre, .66 acres. Therefore, the lot is allowed to use the R7 setbacks instead of the R6 setbacks, which are the same for the front setback unfortunately, but they have smaller side and rear setbacks in the R7. So, the R6 setback for the front yard is 25 feet, and in the R7 setback that this property goes by, because it's a substandard lot, is also 25 feet. The original house had a carport with an encroachment of approximately 12 feet into the front setback, which would have been eligible for non-conforming rights. However, the encroachment was expanded without a land use permit, and therefore, the encroachment has lost all eligibility for non-conforming rights due to the increase in the non-conformity. Page eight of your packet shows the original house. Page nine has a recertification of the as-built, and then page seven shows the as-built today. If the variance is approved, then the owner should be required to obtain an after-the-fact land use permit for the encroaching portion of the building. A right-of-way permit is needed for this portion of, for the portion of the structure that encroaches into the right-of-way. There's also a 1.1-foot encroachment into the rear setback, which needs to establish non-conforming rights. These should be conditions of approval of the variance. The current as-built shows a 55-foot sewer easement along the south property line. This was a temporary easement that no longer exists. It was removed by document, Book 1184, page 105, abandonment of easement. The as-built drawing also shows a 10-foot clearing easement along the south property line for a local power company. The petitioner should be required to resolve the need to obtain an encroachment permit with Matneus Electric Association as a condition of approval. In regards to the standard, standard A, or approval criteria A, is met. The approximate slope of the subject property is 34%, which is very significant grade. However, the other lots in Upper Terrace Drive and in this subdivision have similar steep slopes. There's a topography map on page 10 of your packet. The lot is a non-conforming lot of record because it is only .0.66 acres. This lot has an odd shape, which is more difficult to develop than other lots in the subdivision, with the exception of a couple of the triangular-shaped lots elsewhere in the neighborhood. At this property, the west lot boundary is 74.44 feet long, and the east lot boundary is 175.74 feet long, which gives it a trapezoidal shape and leaves a little space for a building on the west side of the lot. Page 11 shows you a zoning map that's helpful in seeing that, the shape of the lot, the odd shape of the lot. There's a 100-scale grid map that shows a larger area and that, you know, a little bit larger than the neighborhood on page 13 of your packet, and then the next page. Page 14 has the final plaque, the plaque of record. Pardon me. Approval criteria B does not appear to be met. The lot is required to maintain a 25-foot front setback from the south property line. It is possible to construct a home and a garage on the property while meeting the required setback of 25 feet in the front yard, 10 feet sides, and 20 foot in the rear yard. The topography shape of the lot and onsite septic system and private well make this lot more difficult to develop than other lots, other lots in many places. However, new construction without a permit created the need for this front setback variance. The new building addition to the original house and the two-car garage is the subject of this variance. Approval criteria C does not appear to be met. In regards to A, the steep slope, the steep topography and the odd shape of the lot taken together create a peculiar physical condition of the land, but in B, part B of that standard, the encroachment is the result of construction without a permit. The original house, the original as-built from 1984 shows a carport encroaching approximately 12 feet into the front setback, which would have been eligible for non-conforming rights. But after 1992, subsequent to the original construction of the home, the structure was expanded to encroach 25 feet or 100%, into the front setback. Approval criteria D appears to be met, or I'm sorry, is met. There are no structure separation violations, drainage and runoff do not appear to be issues. There have been no objections from neighbors and, of course, support from the Chuyak Eagle River Advisory Board. Approval criteria E is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a variance for prohibited use. It will not change the character of the zoning district. Approval criteria F is met. There's no identified health or safety issues with this property. The owner is seeking relief from the front setback requirement in order to complete a single-story building addition. Approval criteria G is met. It's not related to reasonable accommodation or fair housing, ADA accessibility. Approval criteria H does not appear to be met. The lot has a legal single-family home with a two-car garage in the basement already. The building addition, which encroaches 100% of the front setback, is not the minimum variance that will make it possible for reasonable use of the land. The department must recommend denial of the variance because it appears that approval criteria B, C, and H are not met. If, after a public hearing, the Board finds that all nine approval criteria have been met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1 through 7 on page 6 of your packet. The first two conditions of approval are standard. The third condition of approval has to do with establishing non-conforming rights for the encroachment of 1 foot, 1.1 feet into the rear setback. Condition of approval number four has to do with obtaining certificate of onsite system approval from the Onsite Water and Wastewater Services Division. Approval criteria five is obtain an encroachment permit from the Street Maintenance and Right-of-Way Division for the encroachment into the Upper Terrace Street, or remove that encroachment. Approval criteria, I'm sorry, condition of approval six is resolving with Matneus Electric Association the need for an encroachment permit, and condition of approval seven is obtain an after-the-fact land use permit for this building addition. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the Board members? Ms. Emmerton.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the question I had on standard B and C, or the, maybe more C than B, was it the current petitioner that did the change in the building that has caused this hardship?
No, the current owner had nothing to do with this, the expansion that lost the non-conforming rights. They purchased the property and inherited the problem.
Any other questions? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
No, thank you.
They indicate no. Okay. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward? State and spell your name for the record.
My name is Melissa Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H, with Big City Engineers, and I have with me the actual petitioners, Brent and Sarah Davenport. I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal before I jump in here. So, part of what we've gone through in our research with this and in working with municipalities we're preparing the case is that when the house was originally granted a permit, was being constructed in 1984, the land use, like the zoning and actual yard setbacks came in several months after that, which is part of the discussion of why they would have had grandfather rights for that original portion of the building. And, and what we found in the research is that none of the yard setback came up in the sale from the owner from the 1980s when it was originally constructed to the owner in the 90s, who then negated those rights, added on to it, not knowing about yard setbacks and having or not having established grandfather rights for that, and then went to sell the property, and again, it didn't even come up. What came up is that there was a right-of-way encroachment with the addition he had. He thought he was on property. Turns out with the recertification of the as-built that he was not. And so, the right-of-way encroachment was the whole thing. So, when they started this process and went to have the house, it was the right-of-way encroachment that we were first dealing with, and Brent can speak more to that, is just that the yard setback never even came up in the sale of the house and the issues. So, now they've, they've had this. So, with the physical, with B and C, I think the hardship is, one, it's not self-imposed with these guys per se, and that they didn't do it, they inherited this problem, and now they're trying to fix this problem. And as far as the last condition, that the H about it being the minimum, it really truly is the minimum variance required in the situation of, if they don't have it, they'd have to go all the way back to the 25-foot setback, which actually removes part of the original structure that could have grandfather rights. The addition negated that, right? So, now they, we have to ask for all of it and not a piece of it because those rights were negated. So, it really, asking for all of it is the minimum that we could ask for in this situation and maintain what was the original house to begin with, that, I mean, that they purchased with the addition. So, we would like Brent to come up and tell you kind of about the house process and the sale, since I wasn't involved with that part.
What a terrifying thing this is.
We're really nice.
I appreciate that. If it's all right with you, I'll still be scared. What happened was when we moved up from Michigan, we kind of saw, purchased the house almost sight unseen, and when I got here, I was part of the advance party, and my wife and children were finishing up school back in Michigan. So, I met the second owner, Paul, if it's all right. He's the guy who added on to it, and we had a discussion about where things were, and when he enclosed the carport and the lean-to, he said that he had done everything correctly, that he had followed the survey that he had been given, and the survey that he had been given, he was accurate on that. When he poured the concrete and the radiant floor, everything was, was accurate. It wasn't until we had already completed the sale and moved into the house that we discovered that he was incorrect. In fact, I think it was Mr. Lang who, his company showed up and found out that the second or third of the surveys was done incorrectly, and that was what Paul had based all of his work on. What else? Can I... Okay.
So, we'd like to answer questions, but really, I feel, we feel, I mean, in that the conditions that, that the conditions are met, that the standards are met, I mean, that the hardship was not self-imposed. And, and with B, the physical circumstances and strict application, so, if they were building new today, yard setbacks, it could be built, right? And they could encounter that, but they're inheriting an existing condition, and things had changed over time. I mean, the yard setbacks didn't even exist when the house was first built, so it's not, there is that hardship, I mean, that they were under, and so, it's not something that they can easily fix. I mean, if it was new, yes, I'd say we could, and that that standard wouldn't be met. But given the situation, that it is a hardship, and the physical circumstances being that it's already there, that that, that standard is met, and then, again, not being self-imposed, and, and I really do feel that through the process, because that original building encroachment in that front yard setback was negated by the work that was done in the 90s, this is the minimum variance that will make a reasonable use, I mean, of what they purchased for that. So, with that, I mean, I'd like to close and answer any questions you may have.
Is that five? Okay, you have five minutes left for rebuttal when that happens. Are there any questions of the applicant or the applicant's representative? Oh, my. Who's first? Archer? Ms. Iker?
Thank you, through the chair. Has the applicant had a chance to review Department Recommendations 1 through 7 on page 6?
Yes, we have.
And is the applicant comfortable with each of those recommendations and understand?
We are. Part of the discussion we had is that with the building being available for non-conforming rights, we've already talked to land use about that, and that the owners have actually been working through the onsite septic, well and septic, so we don't have issue with any of those conditions. We think they're reasonable.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Mr. Ayers.
Through the chair, Ms. Branch. Did you consider alternatives to, like, vacating the right-of-way to eliminate the need for variance?
So, we did ask that question of away Planning Department staff, and we were looking at that, and one of the questions that came up is, could we do that? So, that would take away the right-of-way encroachment, but we would have to go, I mean, the portion that's in the right-of-way, but that doesn't change the yard setback. But what we were looking at is what they would reasonably look at as a right-of-way vacation still wouldn't solve the, the front yard encroachment setback issue. And so, it didn't seem the best option to move forward.
Through the chair, Ms. Branch. I'm not sure exactly why you think that. If you vacated the right-of-way, it would become your yard, and then the setback would be from the new edge of the right-of-way. Just looking at this, if you had an agreement with Lot 3, and you have sufficient right-of-way width there of 100 feet, a cul-de-sac bulb could be basically shown, say midway down your lot line, still provide full access to you, sufficient right-of-way for street maintenance, and the real impact would be Lot 3 would gain more land and have about 100-foot longer driveway. I just see that as a conforming alternative, and it would eliminate the need for the variance.
So, when we'd originally looked at talking about it, you know, there's 50 foot from the center line of the right-of-way, and if we were to get the 25-foot yard in the part that encroaches, you're looking at almost 30 foot of a take of that 50-foot, leaving only 20 foot from the center line of the right-of-way to stay out of the yard setback for that. And that was why, in the conversations, they didn't think that a vacation of that much take on that much of the right-of-way would actually be reasonable and be supported by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ayers, I, my memory on this is a little hazy, but I know that this issue was discussed. I think that the plating officer discouraged them for, for proceeding with an attempt to vacate the right-of-way. It's a dead-end road, and in these situations, like you said, there needs to be a cul-de-sac bulb. There's a steep topography, very steep topography in the right-of-way, and so, I think the vacation was unlikely. And as Melissa, Ms. Branch, stated, I think that the, the, the type of vacation that would be, they'd be eligible for would still leave a portion of the home encroaching. But that's kind of what I recall, that this issue was run to ground at some point, and a decision was made that this was really the only option for them was the variance. Just wanted to give you some of that background from what I recall. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by the Board? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0117? Anyone at all? Seeing none. Does the staff, there's nothing to rebut, and the applicant, nothing to rebut? Is there anything else you want to say? You have five minutes.
Really, just kind of the reiteration of, as we've gone through this process, and the way the land has developed, and then, over the course of the sales, that the problem really was inherited, that the situation could have had, the existing building was there before yard setbacks were there, they could have had grandfather rights. And over the course of that not being established and yard setbacks being established over the first sale and then the second sale, that they really have met all the conditions, and that they are willing to work through the conditions of approval if granted the variance, they're trying to do the right thing and maintain what they purchased. Anything you'd like to add?
I guess I'll ask a question. Is there any information that I can give you? Because I'm not saying you're speaking Greek, but I'm hearing a lot of language I really don't understand, and that's why we elicited the assistance, because we're trying to do what's right. I understand that you guys have a very important job to make sure that buildings don't fall down. That's kind of what I do for a living, is make sure that people are safe, and that's, what you guys are doing is very important. We unfortunately inherited this conundrum, and we're trying to make it the best that we can. We're trying to fit it within your, your rules so that we are not a problem child. And I want a safe place to put my family. I want a house that I can come home and know that, you know, this is built correctly, and we're within the rules because the rules are really important. So, to take down half my house would be a significant financial problem, as well as even just chopping that building in half would be something right now financially that would, we're not going to be able to handle. So, that's why I'm kind of pleading my case that we would appreciate it if you guys would give us the variance. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the Board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Emmerton.
Thank you. I move to approve case 2019-0177, subject to staff findings 1 through 7 on page 6 of the staff document.
And, Ms. Iker?
I second.
It's okay.
Yeah, but I mispronounce your name regularly, and I'm sorry.
It happens all the time.
Okay. Ms. Emmerton, would you please speak to your motion?
Yes. I do intend to support my motion, subject to finding, staff findings A, D, E, F, and G in the staff packet. I would argue findings B, C, and H are met, in my opinion, and this is due to the fact that the... in my opinion, and this is due to the fact that the homeowners inherited this problem. This is not something that they kind of started with. This is something that they've came with the buying process that was not brought to their attention at the time. Um, and I do not see how we could make them cut their house in half to fit into the zoning. So, I do intend to support my motion.
Ms. Iker?
Um, thank you. I concur with, um, Board Member Emmerton's comments, and also note that when it comes to meeting standard B, um, what's before us is not a request for an, um, an expansion of the variance through any fault or actions of the present applicant, and the physical circumstances of the lot that's such that it had, um, significant challenges when the original construction was put. Um, and I similarly find that standards B and C are met, um, and the same goes with standard H, that's the minimum variance required to make, um, possible reasonable use of the land for what is existing right now through no fault of the applicants. And I intend to support the motion.
Any other discussion? Ms. Iker?
I also intend to support this motion. I also want to put in the findings the, um, fact that, um, the property at the time, um, originally did not have setback requirements under Title 21, or at the code requirement, and that subsequently, um, now that we do that they are trying to be imposed, and, uh, that's a grandfather right issue. Um, so again, I'll, I'll support this motion.
Any other discussion? Okay, um... Is there any objection? To the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes, and the variance is approved. Yay? Presumably. Jonathan? Okay, next case, case, uh, 2019-0131. Uh, the Andrew and Cynthia Sandusky owners, are they in attendance? Okay. Will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice in this case?
On August 21st, 2019, a total of sixty-six public hearing notices were mailed. No community council comments were received. However, the owners of abutting lot six submitted a signed letter stating they have no objection, objections to the variance request. This letter is included in the petitioner's application.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none. Uh, will the staff please present the case?
So first, I'd like to note that the owners of the property in question, um, have changed hands. Uh, so the, um, agenda item H2 supplementary packet number one has a, contains a letter from the previous applicants transferring both, well, transferring the application to the current, uh, current owner and authorizing that. So, just bringing that to your attention, that the owners have changed hands. So this, this is a request to allow an existing two-story, single-family home to encroach five feet and eleven inches into the required twenty-five-foot side setback on the northern property line. The encroaching single-family structure was constructed in 2002, and the original applicants asserted in their narrative that the home was constructed referencing incorrect survey monuments, a situation that resulted in the present encroachment. According to the applicants, this survey discrepancy was discovered very recently when the abutting property to the north, Sun Valley Block Two, Lot Six, installed a fence on the shared lot line. Uh, upon examination, it is possible that the surveyer involved in the 2002 home construction based their survey on incorrect monuments, which may have resulted in faulty lot line locations that contributed to the side setback encroachment. However, municipal staff have determined that the survey submitted as part of the original land use permit, O2E3112, contained lot line angles that close and are consistent with flat 82-79. In addition, uh, the existing structure was built in a different location than was approved in land use permit, uh, O2E3112. The land use permit also was never closed post-construction, so the home currently does not have a certificate of occupancy. A copy of the land use permit is provided in section three of the staff report. Looking, uh, looking at the, uh, the conditions of approval, A, the standard is not substantially met. Steep topography is present on the east side of the applicant's lot, Lot Seven, that descends westward from approximately eighteen-hundred-and-fifty feet at Highland Drive to approximately seventeen-ninety-five feet in the, in the middle of the lot. The western half of the lot slopes gently but is generally flatter. Further details are available in the topographic map in the application. And similar topography is present on adjacent lots in the same zoning district. Uh, there is adequate buildable area on the lot that could have accommodated this two-story, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four-square-foot single-family home that was originally approved in land use permit, O2E3112. No exceptional extraordinary physical circumstances exist that would have necessitated an encroachment. Standard B, the standard is not substantially met. As stated in the analysis of standard A above, there is adequate buildable area in the lot that could have accommodated the non-encroaching two-story, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four-square-foot single-family home that was originally approved in land use permit, O2E3112. Therefore, a strict application of the code does not create an exceptional or undue hardship. C, the standard is not substantially met. The hardship was self-inflicted because the structure was not built in accordance with the approved land use permit. However, a contractor, C and T Construction, carried out the land use permit process on behalf of the original applicants. The applicants asserted that they were unaware that the final location of the structure was not reflected in the approved land use permit. The applicant also claims that they were unaware that the permit was never closed out. Similarly, the new owners, uh, state that they were aware of the variance, however, that the professionals involved, um, as well as the previous owner, did not, um, alert them of the gravity of the variance. D, the standard is substantially met. A total of nineteen feet and one inch remains between the applicant's structure and Lot Seven and the lot line of abutting Lot Six. Photographs submitted by the applicants also show a reasonable amount of space between the structure and the fence that separates the two lots. The department has received no complaints or public comments regarding the encroachment, and the owners of Lot Six have submitted a signed letter of non-objection, as mentioned. In addition, the Sun Valley subdivision modified and recorded their covenants, buildings, and land use restrictions to recognize the encroachment. Standard E, the standard is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow private use or change the character of the district. Standard F is substantially met. There are no identified health or safety issues. Standard G also substantially met. Standard is not applicable to detached, single-family residences. Standard H also met. The requested variance is the minimum variance that would allow continued use of the existing single-family home. With that being said, the department does not find that all standards are substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions on page four of the staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Ayers?
To the chair. Uh, staff, on your department recommendation, page four, item number one, I believe that the word "structure" is missing from that first sentence?
That's correct. That is an error. I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to insert the word "structure" after the word "existing" in the first sentence?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other question? Are there any questions of, uh, the staff by the applicant? Okay. Uh, will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward? State and spell your name for the record, please.
Um, Virginia Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N.
Please present your case.
Um, so, members of the board, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My family and I are very happy-
Could you speak up just a little bit?
So, is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
So, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Uh, my family and I are very, um, happy in our new house, and, uh, truly feel that we have joined a wonderful inviting community. Um, I appreciate Mr. Hodges' position. He's been very helpful, and, uh, I can tell he cares about what he's doing. I would also express my appreciation to, uh, the work that's being done by this board. It's this board, and others like it, that are responsible for shaping and ensuring the good order and well-being of this community, so I thank you. It's that good order and well-being of, of my new community that brings me before you today. I am asking you for this variance, not for monetary purposes or convenience, but to reestablish the good order within my community of neighbors in order to maintain the future well-being of our community. Before we set foot on this property, uh, we marked it highly desirable, um, in our Zillow searches, and after setting foot on the property, and then in the house, I knew it had almost everything we were looking for. After meeting with the Sandusky's and hearing about the neighbors, we knew what this wanted, we wanted this to be our family's permanent home. When we got the paperwork and began to review the survey, my husband noticed the dimensions contained a close proximity, a close proximity to the property line. This concerned us because we viewed another property on the other side of Eagle River that same day that also had a zoning rule violation. At this point, we heard that many homes in this area are non-conforming, and we became determined to get conforming. That is why we are here today, our desire to conform to the good order and well-being of our community. The variance we are here to discuss was initiated at our request by the previous homeowners. The analysis by the planning department and Mr. Collins was insightful and helpful. I would like to discuss the three areas that were determined, uh, to not substantially meet the standards on page two and three of the application sent to us. So standard A from page two states, "There exists exceptional and extraordinary physical circumstances, circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and these circumstances are not applicable to the other land in the same zoning district." From the topo map on page sixteen, we can clearly see the steep slope present, steep slope present on the east side of Lot Seven as described by this report. But I'd like to point out that unlike any of the adjacent properties in the subdivision, and contrary to the abbreviated analysis provided, the far west side of Lot Seven is also very steep. It's approximately a twenty-five percent slope. This is an exceptional and extraordinarily unique feature within this development. The topography, which is not depicted in the, in the original land use, use permit, on page twenty-three, is what I believe necessitated some of the site adaptations that exact, that exaggerated the situation that led to this non-conformity. The topography would have required the contractor to realign the house and the driveway to reduce the slope as required by the traffic department to conform within plus or minus a ten percent slope at a sixty-to-ninety-degree angle off the roadway. More site adaptations forced the deck to realign to orient the house to the extraordinary views of the valley. Bottom line, topography and the physical characteristics of use, or, I'm sorry, bottom line and the, bottom line, topography and the physical characteristics of Lot Seven in 2002 necessitated these and most likely other site adaptations unknown to the contractor at the time he submitted the permit. Additionally, at the time of construction, I assert that, in judgment of the home builder, the northern portion of this property was the most feasible and ecologically beneficial portion of this lot to excavate the necessary plateau area to construct a home of this size. Only over the next fifteen years of excavating and removing hundreds of tons of glacial fill in order to develop and landscape the area to the south of the current house, has Lot Seven been transformed into what we currently see in the topographical map on page sixteen. It took a lot of time and effort by the Sandusky's and their neighbors, but it was not always like what we see today. Um, standard B on page three states, "Because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner, and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same district under the terms of zoning ordinance. As stated before, at the time of construction, the house was placed at what the contractor determined to be the most feasible and prudent location, conforming to all of the known site adaptation required, requirements, and within what he believed was the proper property setback requirements. It was not until 2017, while a new neighbor performing a property survey to establish a fence line, discovered the monuments used in the original survey were inaccurate. In discussions with Mr. Hodges, the municipality surveyors properly asserted that the interior lot line angles are close, and therefore the rotational error of the property lines does not completely account for the size of the error. However, the lack of GPS coordinates and further information on the inaccuracy of the survey monuments does not rule out a translation error, because the whole property was shifted, which could explain the additional size of the error. My bottom-line assertion, unlike Mr. Hodges, is that there was no nefarious or intentionally negligent acts by the original surveyors, contractor, or homeowners. An accident placed the corner of this house where it is, and it would be an exceptional and undue hardship to move this existing home to provide a twenty-five-foot setback that my current neighbor and fellow members of my community believe to be acceptable as is, especially since there exists a similar variance for a property within the same district on plot three of Block Two, as stated in the Sun Valley subdivision letter provided. Standard C on page three says, "The hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. While this application was initiated by the property owner at the time, it was done so at our behest, and we are the current property owners and applicants. We clearly are not responsible for the actions that created the special circumstances we're discussing today. Additionally, due to this process, I now believe we would require a variance to close out the property's land use permit, um, O2E3112, to obtain a certificate of occupancy to properly reside in this residence. So I don't think it's merely an inconvenience for us to abide by what we have learned to be the proper requirements to reside in this home." In closing, all the other requirements to receive a variance were substantially met- In closing, all the other requirements to receive a variance were substantially met, so I'll skip them to be brief. Regardless of how we got here, the situation must be dealt with. Our choices are to do nothing to fix the non-conforming house and let it continue to be negatively, and continue to let it negatively impact the property values and good order of this community, or secure the good order and well-being of this subdivision. So my neighbors and community members can move forward. So, please grant us this variance, and I thank you for your time."
Are there any questions of the applicant by the Board members? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0131? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
I do not, thank you.
And does the applicant have any rebuttal? Probably nothing to rebuttal. All right, then, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the Board. May I have a positive motion, please? Please. Ms. Amerton.
Move to approve case 2019-0131, subject to staff conditions on one through three on page four of the packet.
And Ms. Hickok, seconds, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yeah, I actually personally am struggling with this one a little bit. I find it hard because they just purchased the house, and they purchased the house knowing the non-conforming, and I feel like if we approve it, we set a precedent to, everybody just buys the next house, and then it's no longer, we can just, oh, it's not their fault, it's the person's before them's fault. And so I'm struggling, honestly, personally with this one a little bit, so. I am actually open to discussion on where I'm feeling with this one, if anybody's got any better suggestions, so.
Okay, Ms. Hickok?
I intend to support the motion. I believe there are physical extraneous circumstances with the topography, as noted on page sixteen of the case packet. You can see not only do they have a significant grade difference in the rear, but also in the front yard adjacent to Sun Valley Drive. Looking at the topography specifically in that corner, and the requirement to have a 10% driveway grade against a 25% grade, it appears that the contractor made the right decision of where to place the house, however, probably should have gone through the correct procedures of going through the land use permit. As far as findings, I believe it was findings A, B, or B and C?
A, B, C.
That weren't met, however, I believe they are due to the physical circumstances. Oh, A, B, and C. As far as not being self-imposed, Ms. Amerton, I think I struggle a little bit with it. However, it was the contractor that moved the building, it wasn't technically the homeowner previously. And so for that reason, I'm going to support this motion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hale?
Through the Chair. I can, I can see the, this lot looks like it's particularly affected by the grade, more so than some of the others, looks like it's got less room, so I can certainly get past that part of things. And say that the physical circumstances do kind of create an undue hardship. Looks like they could have fitted on there, but I think the bigger issue for me is the fact that this permit was never cleared. I have a hard time with that because that's totally self-imposed, whether it's the current owner or the previous one, and, you know, contractors don't do the right thing all the time, so I mean, I have a, I have a real hard time with this trying to, trying to get past that one. So I'm not sure that I can support the motion at this point.
Any other discussion? You have something else, Mr. Hale? Mr. Smythe?
I'd like to say I do intend to support the motion. I think this is another example of what we've heard many times before where the homeowner, either the first or the second, is at the mercy trusting contractors or professionals that let them down and failed the system. I think the remedy to that in this specific situation, and to me, the Board's job is not necessarily to worry about precedents, but it's a case in front of us because it's specific, and we're supposed to consider the very specific elements of each one, is that there, the results of meeting the setbacks specifically here would gain in no way except for to meet this dimension. So, I don't think there's any other benefit to the community or the owner to strictly enforce this, to flip it around. That's all.
Mr. Lang?
Through the Chair. I understand exactly what the petitioner is saying as far as the restrictions for driveways and siding structures in Eagle River, that is quite burdensome at times because of the exceptional slopes there. A point I wanted to make is that this could be resolved by replating and moving that property line, but it wouldn't change anything on the ground. So I don't see any detriment in granting this variance, and I believe I'll be supporting this motion.
Anyone else? Mr. Ayers, Siker? Nope. Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll vote. Okay, seven yes, and only took five, so the motion passes and the variance is granted. Okay, moving on to the third case. Third case, case 2019-0132, Shawna Popovici. Okay, indicate she is in attendance. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Four hundred and ninety-seven public hearing notices were mailed on August 21st. Five responses were received from the public, and all five supported the variance. No comments were received from the Community Council.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Okay, seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The exist, this home has an existing second-story deck that is located 20 feet from the south property line. The deck is proposed to be expanded and would create an eight-foot encroachment into that 20-foot south setback, front yard setback. The deck, the deck expansion would add 262 square feet to the deck, which would create a total-sized deck of 354 square feet. This is the minimum size that would make the deck usable, a usable space for a wheelchair-bound person. The petitioner is requesting the variance in advance of starting a building permit, starting the building permit process. The primary purpose of the deck expansion is to provide a life-safety egress for an elderly family member who needs in-home care and uses a wheelchair. This is a split-level house that was built in 1973, and it has no ADA-accessible egress onto the second floor. The elderly person will be living on the second floor of the home. There is a procedure to allow people with disabilities and assisted-living providers to request reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. This process could approve the deck to be rebuilt to meet the ADA requirements, which would have a two-foot encroachment in the setback. This process would solve the ADA egress problem, but it would not create a usable outdoor space on this deck. The deck needs to be rebuilt regardless of whether the variance is approved because it is, was not a permitted deck when it was constructed by the previous owner. The existing deck does not meet the minimum height requirement from the ground. This was discovered by the current owner when they began investigating options to expand the deck for this family member. There's a four-foot-tall retaining wall on the east side of the property that is unique to this lot. I'm sorry, approval criteria A appears to be met. There's this four-foot-tall retaining wall on the east side of the property. Since none of the other lots in the subdivision have this type of drop-off in topography, this renders approximately 500 square feet of the property not usable. This is a corner lot, which has a 20-foot primary front setback from the south property line, Linwood Drive, and a 10-foot secondary front setback from the west property line, Austin Street. If the primary front setback was switched to the west side, to Austin, to the west property line, Austin Street, which is the actual front of the house, has the front door, then the proposed deck would easily meet the required setback of 10 feet, and it could even be two feet wider than is being proposed tonight. All of the internal floor plan of this split-level house and the location of the house on the lot make the south side of the house the only functional place for a deck. Approval criteria B is also met. Decks are not as permanent as houses, but they do add substantial value to property by creating outdoor spaces with a sense of privacy. Decks can be used for cooking, eating, as well as leisure activities like socializing, reading, and playing games. These activities can be particularly important for a physically and mentally challenged elderly person because they provide health benefits and improve the quality of life. The existing deck is four feet wide, and is, the existing deck is four feet wide and does not encroach into the setback. The minimum required deck for ADA requirements is six feet. The proposed deck would be 12 feet wide and encroach eight feet, 40%, into the setback, into this primary front setback. Linwood Drive is constructed with a 24-foot-wide strip-paved street within a 60-foot right-of-way. That's standard for many of our neighborhoods. The street was recently repaved in 2018. The deck expansion would be 27.8 feet away from the constructed street. There are no plans to widen Linwood Drive at this time because the street functions well without any additional upgrades. Sidewalks of five foot wide are a low priority at this location, and there's sufficient right-of-way to accommodate for them in the future. Approval criteria C is met. The subject property is unique, and the deck expansion would provide ADA-accessible access to the second floor of the home, and it would add value to all of the other neighbors', neighbors' property as well. Even with the deck expansion, a total lot coverage, it has a total lot coverage of approximately 28%, which is less than the 30% maximum lot coverage in the R2M district. A deck expansion of two feet is necessary for ADA accessibility. The proposed eight-foot expansion would improve the quality of life for a homebound elderly person. The hardship is not self-imposed because the property owner cannot change the fact that they have a physical challenge, challenged mother, and that the building code, Title 23, has a minimum ADA-accessible requirement that is being placed on them. The approval criteria D is met. There are no structure separation violations, drainage and runoff do not appear to be issues. There have been five letters of support, of which two are from neighbors to the west and south of the proposed deck, possibly the most affected by the, this encroachment, eight-foot encroachment into the front setback. Approval criteria E is met, the requested variance is dimensional, not for prohibited use, will not change the character of the district. Approval criteria F is met, the deck expansion will create, create a wheelchair-accessible egress to the second floor of the house, which is great, would greatly improve safety for the physically challenged resident of the house, and this standard speaks to health and safety. Approval criteria G, the variance will create an ADA-accessible egress to the second floor of the house, which is one, where one does not currently exist. Approval criteria H is also met, the property owner is seeking relief from the 20-foot primary front setback requirement in the R2M district in order to expand the deck for an elderly family member who needs in-home care and uses a wheelchair. The proposed deck would encroach eight feet, 40%, into the front setback, but would result in only 354 square feet of usable space. The encroachment is small, but the value of the added deck spaces is significant. This is the minimum variance that will make it possible, would create a usable outdoor deck space for a wheelchair-bound person. The Department finds that all the approval criteria are met and is recommending approval subject to conditions one through three on page six of your packet. Approval criteria, I'm sorry, condition of approval two requires an updated plot plan by a surveyor, and condition of approval three requires the surveyor to verify that the lot coverage requirement in the R2M district is met. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the Board? Any questions of the staff by the applicant? Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening.
State and spell your name for the record, please.
Okay, it's Shawna Popovich, S-H-A-W-N-A, and last name is P-O-P-O-V-I-C-I. And I have no question, yeah, it's Popovich, it looks funny, but yeah.
Please present your case.
Good evening, my name is Shawna Popovich, and my husband, Ovidio, and I are the owners of 6241 Austin Street. I do want to take a moment to thank the staff. They answered a lot of our questions over the last few months and helped us understand this process that we needed to go through. I also wanted to thank our neighbors, I know that many of them are not here today. We have a good neighborhood, and we watch out for each other. I was grateful that people took time to respond, even the one that was kind of funny, and even though we only met one of those neighbors through some crime-watch meetings, but we didn't actually know her prior to this letter, which was fun, so we've been able to chat. And I'm here today because we do want to be good neighbors and go through the right process. But I'm also here because of my family, and we've applied for this dimensional variance. I want to start by saying we concur, me and my family concur with the Planning Department's report that all the standards have been met for this dimensional variance, and I'm happy to be here to answer any and all of your questions. But I think without going into great detail tonight, we've explained our family's situation in our narrative. But a bit more background on my husband and I. We purchased this home a couple of years ago for the needs of our immediate family, just my husband and I and our two daughters. But we have been blessed, and we've been blessing others with the purchase of this home. We've hosted two exchange students, four RILCA schula teacher interns, a friend struggling to finish college, and my cousin, or my cousin when her husband was deployed before she moved back to Texas. My sister and her newborn lived with us for two and a half years while she was becoming a nurse. But now we're returning the favor to my mother. She once let us stay with her to save money for our first down payment on our home. She is facing declining health and financial burdens after her third back surgery, and she lives with residual pain. Although we're working on the upstairs of our home to convert it on the inside, it's time for us now to focus on the outside. It is a split-level home, the entrance to our home, she has to go upstairs every day. The entrance to our home, she has to go upstairs every day to get in and out of the house. That won't change with the addition of the deck. But I explained a lot of the reasons why we thought we met this variance, and I don't want to take up too much of your time explaining all those things again of why I think a deck is a safe and secure way also to enter and exit our home. We feel that we've done the best to conform to all the MUNI requirements for this variance, and my husband and I, we think it is a reasonable request. I want to take time to thank you guys all for being here tonight and taking time out of your evenings and also reviewing all these applications, mine included. You know, and reviewing our unique situation. So I'm here to answer any of your questions or expand on anything. I am a talker, so I could answer your question in 20 minutes, or I'm trying to do it in one. So we've attached the narrative, and I'd be happy to expand on anything if you have questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Iker.
Thank you. Through the chair, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for submitting this variance before you constructed the deck.
Any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0132? Anyone from the public? Seeing none? Does the staff have any rebuttal?
Uh, no.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
I guess I just did want to say, kind of going off of what you stated, you know, we did buy this home from the daughter of the deceased owner. So they didn't, she had nothing to declare, and we did not know that the permit for the existing deck was not closed. We did find that out through just our own discovery. I mean, my husband did the own measurements, and he's like, how did this not comply, and how did our inspector not catch it? So it was a surprise to us. We know that we have to remedy the deck anyway as it is, so that's everything.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Iker.
Thank you. I move to approve case number 2019-0132, subject to the department recommendations one through three on page six of the packet.
And Ms. Emmerton seconds. Would you speak to your motion, please, Ms. Iker?
Thank you. I plan to support my motion, and I'd like to adopt the findings of staff in the packet for items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H, as they're well reasoned, and I quite frankly don't have anything to add to them.
Ms. Emmerton?
Thank you. I intend to support the motion as well, same findings as Ms. Iker.
Is there any other discussion on this case? Is there any objection to approval of this variance? Last case of the evening. Does anybody need a break? Everybody okay? Okay, on we go. Last case, case 2019-0133. The petitioner is Jason Reine.
Here.
He indicates that he is present. And will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
On August 21st, 2019, 117 public hearing notices were sent to, uh, out to the neighbor, neighboring property owners. One public comment was received in support. A notice of public hearing was also mailed to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, as well as the Land Use Committee, and no comment was received from either of those.
Is there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from AMC 2107-020B9, which is stream setbacks and table 21071, minimum stream setback width per side to allow, to allow a proposed well to encroach plus or minus seven feet into a required 25-foot stream protection setback. The petitioner is applying for a variance to allow a well to encroach into the stream protection setback. The subject parcel has an existing single-family home built in 1977, and has a public sewer connection as well, but no water well. The previous owner carried in water, used surface water to supply the home. The owner has an obligation to his financing company to install a water well by November 2019. The owner intends to install the well in a location that minimizes excavation, disturbance of existing vegetation, and provides the only reasonable access location for drilling due to the extreme topography of the lot. The unnamed stream flows along the east side of the property, both above and below the surface, until it flows west in a channel along higher terrace along the whole frontage of the property. No agencies objected to the granting of this variance, and staff has found that standard A is met. There are exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant the grant of the variance. It's affected by a stream, which requires the stream protection setback along the eastern boundary and along the northern boundary of the property, which runs the entire front of the property along higher terrace. The slot, the lot slopes steeply uphill from the front of the lot to the rear, approximately 50 feet in elevation with an average slope of, of 40 percent plus. These extraordinary physical circumstances on the subject property limit the placement of the location of a well. Staff finds standard B is met. The physical circumstances of the lot create an exceptional hardship on the property due to the steep topography. Wells are a common rite of enjoyment in this district and neighborhood, and the inability to have a well in this lot is a undue hardship on the property owner. Standard C has been found to be met. The topography of the lot and the stream location designation are peculiar, peculiarity that are special circumstance not resulting from actions of the applicant. A water well is a necessity. Without well for potable water, it would be a hardship on the property owner because of the loss of financing for the structure due to the property not having a well. Staff has found that standard D has been met. Given the character, history, and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties, and a letter of support from the neighbor was submitted. Staff finds that standard E has been met. It will not change the character of the zoning district. The GR2 district is intended for primarily detached, single-family and two-family residential dwellings with municipal services. Granting the steam, stream protection encroachment will not permit a use other than what is already allowed under current code. Staff finds that standard F has been met. No adverse effects to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the municipality are anticipated if the variance is approved. The petitioner will be required to get a permit for the well, and staff has placed this as a condition of approval. Standard G is not applicable to attached, single-family dwelling. And staff finds that standard H has been met. There are exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant granting of this variance. There are stream impediments that would prevent the owner from placing a well within a conforming location. Granting the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land, and also the minimum amount of vegetation that will be disturbed on the property, as well as access. So the department finds that all the approval criteria are met and recommends approval of the variance subject to conditions one through three, found on page seven of the staff packet. I can answer any questions as Francis and I have both been out to the property.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Odell by the board? Okay. Will the applicant please come forward? State and spell your name for the record.
Okay, yeah, I'm Jason Reine, J-A-S-O-N-R-E-I-N. So I grew up in Girdwood, where the property is located, graduated from high school, South Anchorage, and got my degree in civil engineering. I put that to use immediately on large construction projects throughout the state. Recently, I've helped putting together the plans for 75 to 90 on the Seaward Highway, among others. For the last three or so years, I was down in Ketchikan, living on my boat, saving up money so that I could buy this property well, so that I could buy a property. After returning, I was given the opportunity to buy the house at 284 higher terrace. Knowing the tight market in Girdwood, I knew that the only places that I would be able to afford would need to have some work done. It took several months, but I was eventually able to convince Alaska USA to give me the renovation loan needed to come up with the money for the property. One of the conditions of that loan was to, that I had to promise to have a well installed by November 15th of this year. Since the house is currently supplied with gravity-powered water from a mountain spring uphill of the house. It's been my observation that groundwater from the mountain hillside percolates out from where the current water source is and continues on down, creating the feature which the municipality has deemed and mapped to be a stream. Normally, using the term "stream" would not bother me, except there is a regulation in the code, AMC 21 dot 07 dot 02B9, which mandates a 25-foot setback from any unnamed stream. I was aware that such restrictions did exist, however could not believe that it would seriously be applied to a feature as minor as that which flows across my property. I have taken to calling this flow the Rhine Rivulet. As a rivulet is a far more appropriate term to describe what is being called a stream. I should add, I'd like to add that I did not know that this was considered a stream before buying the property. It became known to me after the sale was complete. It's an extremely minor flow of water that I've measured to be less than half a gallon per minute. In my personal and professional opinion, it is not reasonable to put this rivulet in the same category as Fish Creek, Aliaska Creek, or Chester Creek as it is being done. It is also contradictory to the statement in the first sentence of AMC 21 dot 07 dot 02B9. Stream setbacks are intended to reflect the size and characteristics of the water body, as well as the pattern of adjacent land development. If a full or partial elimination of the setback is not granted, I will be pursuing exemption, special exemption on my taxes. I believe it should be given because I should not have to pay full taxes for land that I cannot make full use of. The resultant area covers over half my lot. It runs down along the east lot line, meets the roadway ditch, and turns sharply and follows the road in the ditch along the north lot line and entire frontage of the lot. The ditch is an obvious man-made realignment of the rivulet's original and natural path. The road which this ditch serves is a far greater source of stream contamination than a well would be. The Rhine Rivulet enters this ditch and is only one of several such flows that collect along the ditch. However, it is the only one shown on the MOA's map. Any well site would require me to cross this ditch and disturb the setback area for access. My proposed location would have the least impact to the rivulet due to the localized topography and vegetation on the lot. My plan is to temporarily span the ditch with some six-by-eight lumber and do some minor hand grating to get some, to get a drill as far back from the street as possible along the corridor between the rivulet and the shed without avoiding cutting any trees. I'm trying to maintain the general character of the neighborhood and do not see any reason that installing the well at my desired location would have any impact to the rivulet or other properties to meet the standards, to meet the standards imposed by this regulation would cause a far greater disturbance to the site overall, with the potential for additional unattended consequences of opening up the tree canopy, creating new wind patterns that could cause more trees to fall and become hazardous. My neighbor across the street has written a letter of support for the variance, and I have also presented my case to the GBOS and Land Use Committee, where no objections were heard and a general sense of support for my request was given. That's all I have. Thank you for hearing my case.
You have almost four minutes of rebuttal time left.
Okay.
All right, are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Ms. Emmerton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This doesn't, these are just me being curious, so I apologize for wasting everybody's time, but I'm curious. Did it dry up this summer when it was so dry? Did your rivulet continue to flow?
It did.
It did, okay. Like, I agree with staff's findings. I'm planning on supporting a motion. This is me just being curious at this point. Okay. And when you bought the property, were you always planning on putting in a well?
Yes, that was the original plan. It was, it was to put in the well.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Iker?
On page 25 of the case packet, there's a memo from WMS that recommends relocating the well location. Is, did you consider that?
Uh, yes, I did, and I contacted the, my well-drilling contractor, and he's, his recommendation or, I guess, assessment was that it's not practical to install it in another location without major excavation and tree removal. Also, I would likely need to demolish a portion of my shed to gain access, and I believe some of these actions would also require a variance.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So seeing no one else in the room, I don't think there's anyone else in the public that wants to speak to the case, so we're about, we're down to rebuttal now with nothing to rebut. Does the staff have any rebuttal? No. Does the applicant have any rebuttal? No. Okay. So the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale?
Move to approve the variance in case number 2019-0133, subject to department recommendations one through three on page seven.
Thank you. And Mr. Smythe seconds. Mr. Hale, would you speak to your motion, please?
The Chair, uh, yeah, I see that the, uh, the topography and the creek impose a huge issue with doing anything on this property, so I, I find that you really should have this so that you could have some water, so I'm going to support it.
Mr. Smythe?
I also intend to support the motion for all the reasons stated previously.
And I guess, Mr. Hale, do you want to address the findings? And I guess, Mr. Hale, do you want to address the findings?
Sure, I agree with the staff findings, was it, A through H? In particular, the thing that makes me support this is the topography and the stream setbacks, because it really renders most of the property kind of unusable unless you get a variance for this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any objection to approval of the variance? Seeing none, the variance is approved. There you go. Enjoy the Rein Rivulette.
Yeah, I guess that is one other point.
Hurry, hurry.
I do need to, like, part of the reason I am here today is I need to get my permit to get the well, and I don't know if there's anything I can get to give to on-site.
That's all through the, the permitting center. I'll talk to you afterward.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, so that's the end of the public hearings. Nothing on the agenda by way of reports. Any board member comments? Do you want to comment? No comments? entertain a motion to adjourn? Ms. Iker?
So moved.
Ms. Emmerton seconds. We're adjourned.
Nice. I just ate 30. I'm hungry.
Nice. I just ate 30. I'm hungry.